Still ringing. Okay, this is the Committee on Finance. We're going to be hearing two agendas today. First up is House Bill 40. And first up is Department of Taxation Director Suganuma.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. Gary Suganuma, Director of Taxation. Department of Taxation stands on his written testimony.
Thank you very much. BNF?
Chair, Vice Chair, Members. Go to Solvarya, Budget and Finance. The Department will stand on its written testimony by comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on Zoom, I think we have Hawaii Emergency Management Agency.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. My name is Jo Montsumoto and I'm representing Administrator James Barrows. We stand by our written testimony offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tax Foundation?
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. This is a routine bill considered every year. We have submitted written comments and will be available for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Members, no more testifiers that signed up. Any questions for the testifiers? Representative Ward?
Thank you Chair. No tax please. Do you have a revenue estimate on the tax credit?
My understanding is the amount of accredited blanked out right now?
Yeah. But could you give us a minimum, maximum, or what do you think historically may project it to be? Or are you not sure?
A range based on the amount of extra funds that needs to be distributed.
Yeah, exactly.
I can work with Budget and Finance on that.
Okay. Yeah, you guys are T. Whenever we give a tax credit, you guys are the ones, it's going to cost you this. Or make sure you got a dent that is big enough to take that kind of a hit.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to be moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1100, Department of Taxation.
Good afternoon Chair. You stand on a written testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Tax Foundation?
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. This is another routine bill submitted every year. We have submitted written comments. Will be available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, there's no testifiers, further testifiers. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill. House Bill 1020 relating to payment of claims of unclaimed property program. BNF?
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. The Department will stand on its written testimony in support. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. No other testifiers, Members, questions? Representative Ward?
Just for a clip, Mr. Solvay. Are these unclaimed funds in banks or where does all this money come from?
It's actually in the Treasury. This is the unclaimed property
What are the properties?
That states are required to remit to respective state treasuries when individuals have, say for example, unclaimed property.
Is it real estate? Is it cars?
It's not real estate. It's not cars. There are some hard assets. But it's primarily like leftover accounts, like say for example, you had a gift certificate that you never claimed. That the issuer of that gift certificate is required to remit that to the state of where that person resided.
Is that where the word ischeat comes from?
Yes.
Okay, now I got it. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Okay, Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1018 relating to state funds. First up is HHFTC. Denise, you're up.
You serious?
Yeah.
Aloha. Chairs, Committee Member, are you serious?
I thought you were standing outside listing, so.
No, I just arrived actually.
House Bill 1080.
Yes, we're in strong support. This affects our $300 million in run-of-hозing revolving funds. And because of the timing and Essar, we really appreciate it. We've already made awards for nearly half of them already. So this needs to happen to protect those awards. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. BNF?
Chair, Vice Chair, the Department will stand on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Department of Labor and Industrial Relations. Okay, not here. Okay, that's all the testifiers we have scheduled or that signed up. Anybody else? Seeing none, Members, any questions? Representative Kubayashi?
Is one-year extension enough?
Yes, Representative, one-year extension is enough because 2003 is the last year of the Essar MOE requirements.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 989 relating to the Department of Economic Development and Tourism. First up is Dennis Ling, DBED. Maybe he's going to walk right into the room. Down here, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority.
There he is.
Okay, Dennis, we're on 989 and you're up.
I know we stand in our testimony, but thank you for updating. We definitely stand in our testimony.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, going once, twice. Okay, seeing none. Okay, Members, no other further? Anybody else want to testify on this measure? Seeing none, Members, any questions? Representative Ward?
DBED please, Mr. Director.
Yes.
You know, you live in one of the most beautiful buildings. I mean, you're an officer in one of the most beautiful buildings. It's won awards. And now you say the sixth floor is like bombed out. You got to spend a half a million dollars just to get it in shape? What happened?
The fifth floor is where our offices are. And so it's termite eaten. There's mold. There's the tiles on the top. You can see there's leaking from the roof.
Oh, the roof leaks also?
Yes.
So Hemender didn't do as much a job as we thought he did then?
I think it's a little older building right now. So, yeah. And so if you come visit our office anytime, you can see that there is a lot of damage that needs to be done. And I think this project has been bid out by DAGs. And so it's just for our expenses to make sure we have the furniture, the cubicles built out, and the moving expenses to make it happen.
How many square feet are you talking about?
Shocked.
We don't know, but it's 40 to 50 employees.
Dennis Ling?
But it's one floor, right?
It's one floor.
I was trying to divide it by, as some contractors, how much per square foot it costs. Because this is quite a renovation for $600,000 and something.
Well, so the renovation is being done by DAGs and it's budgeted and they have that. But this is for us to build it out after the renovations are done. This is for the moving, storage for the people. And then to put in our, I think, 20 cubicles as well as furnishing the offices and the like. So that's what those.
How much is the renovation? Sorry, I mistook that. This is after the renovation. How much is the renovation itself?
It's out for bid.
It's out for bid with DAGs, yeah. It's already budgeted with DAGs right now.
Good. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to House Bill 1073 relating to fees for marriage licenses. First up is Department of Health.
Chair, Vice Chair, Lauren Kim, Planning and Policy Officer for the Department, here on behalf of Dr. Fink, Director of Health. Thank you for hearing this administration bill. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. We strongly support this, but I wanted to highlight two things. The original proposed fee to go from 60 to 100, we realize can provide some sticker shock for some folks. So we are recommending an option B where we increase the fee to $15 and have fewer deposits into existing special funds. The other point I'd like to make is that the people who actually process marriage licenses, the two civil servants and about 20-some-odd private agents who are spread across the state, do not receive any, none of the fee revenue comes back to support their operations. So we would like to take the additional monies, give the private agents a raise in their commission, and deposit other funds into the Vital Statistics Improvement Special Fund so that we can improve customer service. So there are about 20,000 marriages a year, the vast majority of which are licensed, the license for which are issued by private agents. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, there's no other testifier that signed up. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to House Bill 1000 HD1 relating to public employment cost elements. First up is BNF.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I figure I'd stand and testify on this one a little bit because for this and the next 12 other bills, which are exactly the same vehicles, we need those vehicles to continue to move forward. We are currently in negotiation with one remaining bargaining unit. And the intention is if we can come to resolution on that, and if there would be any necessary reopeners, we would need these vehicles to be available so we can address those two as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, no other, nobody else signed up to testify on this? There is somebody. Okay, Members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go on to the next bill. This is also a cost item. This one is for supervisory boot collar position, HGA. You already testified. You, okay, thank you very much. Nobody else signed up to testify. Members, any question? Okay, moving on to the next item, House Bill 1002 HD1. We have BNF's testimony in support. Any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 10004 HD1. This one is the teachers. Are you going to testify?
Aloha Chair and Members of the Committee. Laverne Moore speaking on behalf of, also to a junior, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The HSDA strongly supports this bill. We are the ones that are in negotiations and we are looking forward to really great contracts so that we can retain and recruit our teachers. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, I think I skipped the bill, House Bill 10003 HD1. BNF, we have your testimony. No other testifiers signing up. Questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill.
Chair, we're going to talk from Ms. Moore's testimony. Did you call for questions on that one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip that part?
Okay, ask her a question.
Okay, hold on. Okay, we're going to, I went back to 10003 HD1. Any questions on that one? Okay, no questions. We'll go now to 10004. We'll open up the questions. Representative Ward?
Laverne Moore, please. With such enthusiasm, how many years have you been teaching?
53 years. And I'm still going.
That's enough to vote for this hands down.
Yeah, the teachers really deserve it.
How many more, how many more, Laverne, how shortage are you in teachers? How many teacher shortage are we?
Oh, big time.
500? More than 500?
1,000.
1,000.
And then you put in the new preschools that are coming up. We are really going to be short.
So you could never retire, Laverne?
Well, if the contract is really good, I will stay.
Thank you for your dedication. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, we're moving on to House Bill 1000, I mean 1005 HD1 relating to public employment cost elements. We have BNF's testimony. No other testifiers. Members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to House Bill 1006 HD1. We have, we have BNF's testimony. Nobody else signed up unless somebody wants to testify. Members, any questions? No? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1007 HD1 relating to public employment cost elements. This, we have BNF's testimony in support. Anybody else want to testify? Seeing none, Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1008 HD1 relating to public employment cost elements. This one is the nurses. We have BNF's testimony. Anybody else want to testify? Any questions, Members? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1009 HD1. This one is UPW Institute Health Workers. Okay, we have, this one, we have, we have BNF's testimony. Nobody else signed up. Anybody else want to testify? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1010 HD1. We have BNF's, we have BNF's, no we don't, we do have BNF's testimony. Anybody else wants to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1011 HD1. This one is the, this one is Unit 13. Okay, we have BNF's testimony. Nobody else signed up to testify. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1012 HD1. We have BNF's testimony on this one. Members, any questions? Seeing none. That's the final, wait, that's it. That's the five. That's the final measure on this agenda. Members, we're going to recess for decision making. Our next one is at -- Okay, we're going to need a few minutes. So we're going to come back in about fifteen minutes for decision making. Okay? Recession for decision making.
Okay, we'll reconvene the committee on finance to for decision making on our first agenda. First up is House Bill 40 relating to general funds. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 40 as is. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Ayu.
Aye.
Representative Chun.
Aye.
Representative Cochran.
Aye.
Representative Garrett.
Aye.
Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Kila.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Lamosau.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto is excused. Representative Poi Poi.
Aye.
Representative Taki Noichi.
Aye.
Representative Alcos.
Aye.
Representative Ward.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to House Bill 1100 relating to the conformity bill. Okay, my recommendation is that we defected June 30th, 3,000, and tech. Any discussion? Okay, vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1100 with amendments noting the excused absence of Representative Nishimoto who will be excused absent for the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1020 relating to payment of claims of the unclaimed property program. Okay, recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? Okay, vice chair for the vote.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1020 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 1018. Recommendation is that we defected 10, 630, 3,000, and we're going to be blanking out the appropriation, the one that says $49.5 million. We're going to blank that out. And tech, any discussion? Okay, vice chair for the vote.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1018 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Oh, reservations by--
Yeah, reservations for me.
Okay, Representative Alcos has reservations. Any additional reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to House Bill 989 relating to the Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism. We're going to be blanking out the appropriation and defecting it to 630, 3,000. Any discussion? Okay, vice chair for the vote.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 989 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, we're moving on to House Bill 1073 relating to fees for marriage licenses. We're going to be blanking out the appropriations and putting a-- I'm sorry, blanking out the dollar amount, sorry. And making an-- we're going to defected June 30th, 3,000. Any discussion?
Chair.
Yes.
I couldn't hear what you actually said. You're making so that--
We're going to be blanking out the dollar amounts.
So the cost of marriage doesn't go up? It just goes blank?
Yeah, for now. For now.
It's going up, but--
Yes, we-- they gave us an option A and an option B, and we're going to consider that, so we're blanking it out for now.
Okay, I'll give myself an option with the reservation because as solemn as the promise of marriage, as so was the promise that we made to not raise the cost of living. And this, even though it's this small amount, it's still part of the cost of living that if people want to get married, they're going to have to pay more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any further questions or comments? Sorry. Okay, vice chair for the vote.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1073 with amendments noting the reservations of Representative Ward. Are there any additional reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, voting on House Bill 1,000, HD1, recommendation to pass as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1,000 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1001, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Okay, vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1001 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1002, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1002, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1003, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Okay, vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1003, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1004, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1004, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1005, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1005, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1006, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1006, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
House Bill 1007, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1007, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1008, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1008, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1009, HD1. Any recommendation is as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1009, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, next we're moving on to House Bill 1010, HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1010, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. The final bill, House Bill 1011, HD1, recommendation to pass as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
The recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1011, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. 101, Mr. Beckbridge, sorry. That wasn't the last one. Okay, members, voting on House Bill 1012, HD1, recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? Vice chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass HB 1012, HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, vice chair. Okay, we're going to recess and go right into the next agenda. Recession, I mean, we're-- First up is Karen Ewald, State-- State Foundation Culture and the Arts.
Hi, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. I stand in my testimony in support, and I am open for questions.
Thank you very much. Members, that's the only one that signed up for to testify. Is there anyone wanting to testify? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Representative Kobayashi.
State Foundation, is the intent to have only Honolulu city and county buildings included?
From what I understand, no. The State Foundation would support throughout the state, city, and county.
So it would be all counties?
Yes, yeah, that's what we would recommend.
Okay, well, my reading of this bill is that only city and county buildings are included.
Yeah, I mean, we would, if we need to amend it to say--
Basically, it's ambiguous.
Yeah, right, yeah. If it needs amendments to say, to specify otherwise, then that would be great.
And how would you distribute these pieces of art?
Well, we have already a system in place where we distribute statewide works of art with our exhibit specialist team. It would be helpful to have another position in order to identify, you know, it'd be nice for the person to go into the communities and identify where it's most recommended to put those works of art. And we would want to include the neighbor islands 100%.
What I'm trying to get at is that you have pieces of art--
Yeah.
--worth thousands of dollars, sometimes tens of thousands of dollars, sometimes even more.
Right.
So certain pieces of art would be much more desirable than others. So how do you distribute scarce resources?
We have a system of packing and creating and shipping works of art, and there are works of art that are higher level, more valuable than others, and we identify where those, how those would be moved around the state.
No, I'm not talking about physical distribution, but which private places get them.
That's something that we would want to explore if this was passed, how, with the process of that, because there would need to be a process of identification.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 473, HD1 relating to the State Foundation. The Foundation.
Hello again. Karen Ewald, interim executive director of State Foundation, stand in support with a written testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, there are no further testifiers that signed up. Is there anyone else willing, wanting to testify or willing? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 478, HD1 relating to State Foundation and Cultural Arts. State Foundation.
Last one. Again, we stand in support, we stand in testimony in support of this program.
Okay, thank you very much. No other testifiers signed up. Any testifier, first testifiers? Okay, seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 474, I mean, 4, yeah, 474, HD1 relating to the State, State of Hawaii Museum of Natural and Cultural History. Please.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair. I'm DJ Mailer, and I'm the interim president and CEO of the Bishop Museum, and I stand on our testimony for House Bill 474. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Mahalo.
Okay. Thank you. No other testifiers signed up. Anyone wanting to testify? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 968, HD1 relating to the University of Hawaii. Okay, first up is Amy Akwayani, Hawaii Friends of the Civil Rights.
Aloha, Chair and vice chair and members. Thank you for hearing this bill, and I stand in my written testimony.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is Filipinos for affirmative action.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, and members of the committee. My name is Agnes Malate. I stand on my written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Nobody else signed up to testify. Is anyone wanting to testify on this measure? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. Okay, House Bill 451, HD1 relating to incarcerated individuals. The first one we have is on Zoom, the Department of Human Services.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, members. Kathryn Korenaga, on behalf of Director Betts, the department stands on the, our written testimony in support and affers to Public Safety Department on relevant parts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Department of Public Safety.
Which stand in our written testimony in strong support?
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Correction Systems Oversight Commission.
Mark Patterson.
Hello, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. Mark Patterson, Chair, Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. We strongly support the bill, and I'm standing by for any question should they arise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Kat Brady.
Really strong support for this terrific bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no others that signed up. Is there anyone else wanting to testify on this measure? Seeing none. Members, any question? Okay, no questions. See, no questions. We'll move on to the next bill. House Bill 1129, HD1 relating to incarcerated women. In person, first up is University of Hawaii, Michael Nubasami.
Chair, vice chair, members of committee, Michael Nubasami, Associate VP for the Community Colleges. We stand in support.
Thank you very much. Next up is Public Safety, Director Johnson.
Paul, take your stand in the testimony in support and ask you your comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Department of Education.
Good afternoon, Department. Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education. We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Hawaii Friends of Restorative Justice.
Aloha, thank you for allowing me to testify. Hawaii Friends of Restorative Justice is strongly supporting HB 1129, HD1. HFRJ is an educational nonprofit seeking funding for the third year of this three-year higher education reentry pilot project for women at the Women's Correctional, Community Correctional Center. HFRJ has been tailoring educational programs specifically for incarcerated populations for several decades. It uses restorative justice theory and best practices in contemporary education to reduce incarceration and violence both inside and outside prison. There's an epidemic of mental health problems among young people and children across the entire country. The traditional model of education is partially an issue. Of course, there are pros and cons, but the forced learning model produces shame, anxiety, and fear of being wrong, especially for children with learning disabilities. Women have said that their past educational experiences made them feel that they were stupid and incapable of learning, that they were a failure. And nearly 20% are one in five children in Hawaii don't complete high school. In contrast, the HFRJ's pilot project tries to repair the damage done by the traditional educational system. It's hoped that this pilot project becomes a model for prisons to implement on their own. The cooperative learning model of education is highly effective and successful. It includes peer tutoring, student-centered, active rather than passive learning experiences. It emphasizes social-emotional learning, including mindfulness, listening skills, feeling and controlling emotions, and collaboration skills. This model creates emotional readiness for learning, increases confidence and ability to articulate and share knowledge, reignites intellectual curiosity, and increases critical thinking and problem-solving skills. It provides meaning and purpose and empowers women and gives them hope for the future. In addition to its recent successes, 23 more women are in the process of studying for their GED exams. Over 100 imprisoned women have been helped by the program, and almost all the tutors released from prison are in college, and four are currently enrolled at Winward Community College. So we urge you to please pass 1129, HD1 to continue this valuable, life-changing educational pilot project. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Kat Brady from the Alliance on Prisons.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, members of the Finance Committee. Kat Brady testifying in strong support of this measure. This program is so amazing, not only that it introduces women who never ever thought they could go to college to-- to actually start planning to go to college. And the best part is that they got their GEDs, then they tutor other women. So, it really brings down the temperature of the prison because they're helping each other be successful. This is a great program, and I hope you fund it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Diana Bethel. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else wishing, wanting to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Kat Brady, please. Kat, thank you for being a metric person. You always give us the numbers of how many prisoners are here, how many are on the mainland?
Too many.
Well, no, you have it in your testimony, thank you. But I don't know, what's the universe of women in prison? And how much are we touching? How many people?
Well, the women's prison, I think now has about, I had that number.
Yeah, okay, so the women facility currently has.
Because it's on Zoom, Director, can you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
Now you're in.
This is Tommy Johnson, the Director of Public Safety. At present, the Women's Community Correctional Center has about 190 folks incarcerated there.
And how many are in this program? Are you?
I don't have the exact.
Kat, do you have the number? I know, I'm trying to see what the impact is. Are we touching, you know, 5%, 10%, 30%? 50% what?
Of the women, I would say probably closer to 30 to 40%.
30 to 40%. You know, education is the gateway to opportunities, so the importance of this.
And economic mobility.
Socioeconomic, socioeconomic mobility, clearly. This is as important as the early earning, especially now after they're incarcerated.
Yeah.
So, is this enough money to make it more? Is the interest level there that this funding is sufficient? Or is it where we're just kind of?
We could always use more funding.
Well, but, but Kat, you called it a pilot. You called it a pilot, though. You didn't say that this thing works. You called it a pilot. I don't know if that's your strategy, or that's exactly what it is.
Well, it's not my bill.
Well, I mean, it's called that in the bill, a pilot.
Yeah. And I guess, I don't know.
So, it's more solid than a pilot? Because pilots kind of like.
Well, we've had some pilots that have gone on for decades.
Yeah, like 200 years of democracy is what we are. Thank you, Kat, for that, for your numbers. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, just walk, you can come, you can come forward. You come to the mic, please.
Thank you. Well, the, it's a three-year pilot project. And what Hawaii Friends of Restorative Justice does is they identify a problem and develop a program to study it and implement it. And then they hope that, that the institution will adopt the program in the future. So, it's a three-year program.
And if it works, it's going to go in perpetuity, not every year coming back for funding. It'll be a kind of a light item, or maybe that's up to Tommy and the governor.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1130-HD1 relating to Corrections. First up is Department of Public Safety.
Director Tommy Johnson will stand our written testimony in support.
Thank you. University of Hawaii.
Michael Nubasami, university stands in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Hawaii Friends of Restorative Justice. Diana Bethel.
Hawaii Friends of Restorative Justice strongly supports HB 1130-HD1, which would appropriate funds necessary for Windward Community College to create and provide a trauma-informed certification program for adult correctional officers. My name's Diana Bethel, PhD, working for HFRJ. The bill would give Windward Community College a means to provide a Level 1 Trauma-Informed Voluntary Certification Program for state adult correctional officers. And please note that it would be important for the program to be voluntary. While the state should require all ACOs to have knowledge about trauma-informed care, this program is for ACOs who actively seek out more specialized training. There are important differences between voluntary versus mandated programs. It would be more impactful and meaningful for an ACO to earn a college certification based on their individual efforts. ACOs who choose to earn this trauma-informed certification would become assets and role models able to provide specialized information to other ACOs and staff. These ACOs would advance the practice of trauma-informed care in PSD institutions, and on this basis should perhaps be given a pay increase for this valuable service. Hawaii in general lacks training opportunities for corrections professionals, especially in trauma-informed care. Our state jails and prisons are de facto mental institutions. Special skills are needed to help the incarcerated and help keep correctional staff safe while performing their duties. This measure would help create a more rehabilitative and professional environment by creating a voluntary certification program, and may even make correctional facilities more attractive to job seekers. So, we urge you to pass HB 1130-HD1 to award Windward Community College funding to produce this important voluntary program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any further testifiers? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1131-HD1 relating to gender parity in programs for incarcerated women. Okay, first up is Department of Public Safety.
Director Johnson will stand our written testimony in support as well.
Thank you very much. Next up is Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, Anzu.
Good afternoon, Michael Goldie Jr., Chair of the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. We stand in strong support of this measure. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's no others that signed up? Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1132-HD1 relating to Hawaii Correctional Systems Oversight Commission. Okay, first up is Department of Public Safety.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Tommy Johnson, Director of Public Safety. We stand in support of this measure, and we thank the legislature for incorporating our recommended amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Corrections Systems Oversight Commission.
Martha Torni, I'm a member of the, I'm one of the commissioners on the Oversight Commission. We strongly support this no-cost bill, which will address three areas that will improve the work of the commission, including extending the term of the Oversight Commissioner's, I mean Coordinator's position from two years to six years, allowing the commission to go into meeting clothes to the public to allow discussion of confidential complaints, and allow the Oversight Coordinator unfettered access to facilities, including entering notice without notice to inspect the site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it's Hawaii Paroling Authority. Okay, next up is Community Alliance on Prisons.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair. Kat Brady for Community Alliance on Prisons, testifying in really strong support of this measure. We are so lucky that we have a commission that really cares and is digging into what's going on. The coordinator position is, we are so blessed to have her because she has amazing experience in oversight, and I think this is really crucial. But the term from two, two years is definitely not enough to make a transition from a system that was kind of punitive to one that's, you know, rehabilitative. So, it's going to take time. And we think the six years is a really good time for that person to actually get a start on it, that we can then roll it out and actually have a real Department of Corrections and rehabilitation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Representative Kobayashi.
For Correctional Oversight Commission, I think there might be a technical typo on page 2, line 11 and 12.
Page 2, line 11 and 12.
Do you want to exclude any information regarding action taken by the commission?
Provided that one investigate. The commission shall publish a summary of the investigation without information and that would identify, without information, would identify any complaint and any action taken. We're supposed to be putting in the action taken. So, if there is an error in how it's written, I do ask that you clear that up.
It's just ambiguous language.
Yeah, because we do want to, we want to be publishing what action is taken. Yes. Thank you. I do want to mention that coming up with this section as originally introduced, it did not meet the needs of the OIP and the Law Center of the Civil Beat also. We're concerned about it. So, I negotiated with the two of them. We came up with agreement with language that we agreed to, and this was the language we agreed to. But I do apologize for any misunderstanding. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Any members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 824-HD2. This is relating to medical release. First up is Department of Public Safety.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Tommy Johnson, Director of Public Safety. We support this measure. I just wanted to indicate that we did provide some data in our four pages of testimony. We'd ask you to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kristen Johnson. I'm the Oversight Coordinator of the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. The commission does stand on their testimony, but I wanted to quickly highlight some areas of the testimony that I find particularly important. The amendments that were added to House Draft 1, which created House Draft 2, does add an immense amount of barriers for anybody who previously would have been eligible for medical release. So, I did kind of outline a request to remove those amendments, and I also explained why. I also wanted to highlight that within the past two months, three elderly inmates have died in custody. One was 73, one was 87, and one was 74. These are definitely individuals who could have died at home and not in a correctional setting. In addition to that, I just wanted to very quickly highlight that currently, well, as of yesterday, I should say, there are 169 people in custody who are 65 and older. I know that 65 probably feels young, but in a correctional setting, people age rapidly due to many, many reasons that I could spend a week talking about. But, you know, I just wanted to highlight that this bill could affect many, many people, particularly if those amendments are considered to be removed. And lastly, I just want to end this note that the commission believes that inmates should be released when they are too debilitated to commit further crimes, too compromised to benefit from rehabilitation, or too impaired to be aware of punishment. This bill is specific for people who would not pose a risk to public safety because of those conditions. So, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Paroling Authority. Okay, sorry, not here. Okay, members, any, anyone else wanting to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Representative Ward.
For the parole, Paroling Authority? Or who is? The, oh, sorry, the last testifier. Oversight Commission, sorry. You said there's 169 elderly people, correct?
69 and older, yes. Or 65 and older, I apologize.
But 169?
Yes.
If this bill passes, how many people would likely get a compassionate release? For example?
I don't know the answer.
Are we holding a lot behind that should be because of their health? Or we just, this is one or two people, no big deal?
I don't think it's one or two people. I mean, a prime example, I did add a chart that kind of highlights the number of inmates who are in a medical infirmary or the number of inmates who are currently hospitalized. And that's probably around 15 people. I am very sloppy with math, but, I mean, that's 15 people right there that this would affect.
And some of the, is it drug-related also and age? Or is it just other infirmities, younger?
No, drug-related and recovering from.
Yeah, from addiction.
No, 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 no. These, these people who are either hospitalized or in a medical infirmary most likely have very serious medical conditions where regular housing just wouldn't be appropriate for them. Because the medical infirmaries, you know, they have medical staff right there who are able to tend to the people in custody. Although I do want to highlight while we're on the topic, the unfortunate reality of the jails and prisons and the condition in the state that they're in now. I don't think that the medical infirmaries would pass any type of medical standard in the community.
Hasn't this bill come up a number of times in the past? And do you know what happened to it?
My understanding is that yes. But when amendments are continued to be made to kind of restrict the amount of people who would be released on medical release, it takes away the entire point of the bill. So, I think there are many people who feel passionate about this to the point where if it's not going to be true to compassionate release, they would just rather see it die.
Tommy, is that true? Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you. Vice Chair.
Kristen, I have a question for you. And I didn't see it in the bill, so I'm sorry if it isn't there. But for medical release, do they need to be released to family or to someone who will take them in? Or is there potential that when they get released, they could end up homeless?
I'm going to pass that to Tommy Johnson, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy.
I'm Tommy Johnson, Director of Public Safety. So, as a former administrator for HPA for 16 years, I have a lot of experience in the medical release process. So, in short, the Paroling Authority will not release someone to homelessness, whether it's medical release or not. But in particular, when the person has medical conditions, the Paroling Authority want to make sure that their medical, housing, and their financial needs are going to be met. Unfortunately, in the case of the three inmates that, senior inmates that died, all three were in a form of hospice care. One was coming up for parole. One was chaired a set that had nowhere to go because they burned all their bridges with their families, unfortunately. And another, we were looking for a proper placement for the person that could fit their medical needs. And unfortunately, in the community, there's a huge gap of available bed space for this population that they can afford or their families can afford. So, what we really need for this to work is to have places for these people to go so they get wraparound care and services to meet their needs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any further question? Okay, seeing none, members, we're moving on to House Bill 67-HD1 making appropriation for the Pu'ho'ho'ua program. First up is Della Terra Oka, University of Hawaii. Mr. Nubasami.
Obviously, I'm not Della. Michael Nubasami for the Community Colleges. We stand in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Department of Public Safety.
Tommy Johnson, Director, we stand in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 877-HD1 relating to the University of Hawaii. First up is Mark Patterson. Hawaii Correction Systems Oversight Commission.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Forgive me for pausing at that time. I'd like to stand in support of this bill. The commission is mandated to create a therapeutic model, a foundation to create a therapeutic model in our correctional system to move away from a punitive model. And as we begin to begin the building of that foundation, I believe that this bill can, can create the opportunity for an academic parallel foundation for, created with the, the. parallel foundation for, created with the Hawaiian School and Richardson Law School to create academics in order to train our future leaders in the systems that we are creating for corrections as well as for the interconnected systems in terms of DOE, human services, and mental health. We want to create a better system, but we need to create better future leaders as well with the knowledge of what else can we do to improve the conditions? So, any further questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, please.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kiragawa, and members of the committee. My name is Jonathan Osorio. I'm the Dean of the School of Hawaiian Knowledge, Hawaii New York. And I'm here to speak in favor of this bill. It is a multidisciplinary approach and a collaboration that I think will address important areas of study and teaching in addressing an issue of widespread concern for the state of Hawaii. And I am here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, any questions? Representative Ward.
There's no one from the University of Hawaii or the law school here for this bill?
I'm sorry, but Dean Nelson is undergoing surgery, so she was not able to come today.
Okay. And maybe we can follow up offline, but I'm trying to figure out how the program's going to be instituted at the law school.
We can certainly do that, but I can also ask and answer any initial questions.
Okay, yeah, sure. Can you kind of just explain how the program's going to be administered at the law school?
So the creation of this institute will, will be essentially housed in Richardson Law School because the principal investigator, a law school professor, and the staff will be housed there. But it's important to recognize that we will also have faculty, a faculty member in the Thompson School of Social Work and in public health and a Hawaiian researcher at the School of Hawaiian Knowledge who will collaborate together on the creation of new curriculum and the research necessary to make, to engage with public policy planners and that sort of thing in order to move our understanding of how these things work forward. We would also be doing community engagement. And so some of the people who are being hired into this institute work directly in communities as well as, as a person who will be collecting data and helping us with, you know, technical, the creation of technical models with which we can advise and consult with constituents. But it would be largely an independent institute within the law school and housed in the dean's office, in the dean's offices. So they would be recruiting students to come into this program for a very particular kind of purpose, which is to do this kind of community work in the future as attorneys.
So is, is this going to be part of like some kind of required curriculum for law students? Because it doesn't seem like you've talked that much about like legal understanding or.
No, it's, it's not going to be, it's, it's a research institute, and it will create classes for, for students who are interested in following into this kind of service work. But it's not going to be a general requirement for all law students.
Okay, and when we talk about the service work that you're talking about, it's for some kind of restorative justice?
That's correct. That is correct.
Not necessarily in alignment with the current system that we have today?
I, I would say that that's, that's how both Dean Nelson and I and the dean see it. Yes, it's probably not in complete alignment with the way we police, prosecute, and incarcerate.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Representative Keela.
Dr. Osorio, I have a question. Thank you for being here. And I'm not a lawyer by trade. But I under, I appreciate the intent of this bill, but I'm looking for clarification. Is this supposed to add credibility or viability to folks who are coming into the law school to be more understanding? Or is it that they're taking it into practice, having this in the back of their head? Because I, I know the data, right, and how it affects Pacific Islanders and everything. But I think my always, my biggest concern is that if we come back and it makes it seem that we're trying to be more, I hate to say softer on crime, I have concern.
I think that the law school's missions, which encompass things like advocacy and, and social change. But the law school really actually churns out attorneys. Mostly, that's what they do. And I don't see that that's, I don't think either Dean Nelson or any of us see that that's going to materially change. What we're creating, you know, is, is an avenue for a different kind of, of use and vision of the law that will, that will, will draw some people into it. And we hope they will be productive. We believe that they will be productive and ingenious in terms of being able to create new kinds of ways that we treat not just felons, but poorer communities. And this is really basically the vision for it. If, if people are worried that this will somehow derail the law school's production of attorneys that are going into corporate law and business and prosecution, I don't, none of us sees that happening.
Does the university touch on implicit bias in this capacity when you, when they're going, when students are going through on how they treat minorities?
So if you're asking whether at some point this curriculum shouldn't drift into and meld into how we train lawyers, as an educator, Representative Keela, I would hope that that would be the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Representative Ward.
Professor, can I follow that up? When your program succeeds, what are the measurements or what are the outcomes that you know this is the success? What, what are the indicators that you could tell us?
That's a really good question. I think for us, we would want to see more community engagement in terms of advocating for different kinds of ways that we police, for instance. We'd like to see the establishment of more community centers where issues that are related to poverty and kind of marginalization are addressed. Health, you know, elder care, youth care, childcare, those kinds of things. We originally, Representative Ward, we originally proposed this to a Calog grant about two years ago. And we had a pretty, pretty large vision of basically creating staff for different communities, particularly on Oahu and Kalihia and Waianae and Naukulea and places like that, where they could have an impact. We're not asking for that here. We're asking for the ability to create an institute that will help and, and work with other agencies so that that, that kind of community-centered addressing of problems that, that we see, basically a pipeline for our young people directly into prison can be addressed.
You mentioned earlier also that it's independent of the law school. So you will be able to get outside funding? Or is it always going to be, you're going to have to come before the committees and do all the legislative?
The creation of the institute, we hope, will be sufficient with, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's practically a million dollars a year, and it is a permanent, it is a permanent expense. We would continue this, but we would, yes, we would be reaching out for other funds to expand the ability and capacity of this institute to work with other community agencies.
Has President Lasner given his blessing to you guys?
Well, so long as it comes, doesn't come out of his budget.
Good answer. Very good answer. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative Ward.
One, one more question. So where do you envision students who come out of this program? Where do they go to work and what are they doing?
You know, I see them going into work for, for nonprofit agencies. Yes, I do. I also see some of them going into prosecution. I also see some of them going into, into defending defendants. And it's, it really depends on how much they, you know, how much they are involved with this institute. And, you know, at this point, none of us believes that, or none of us sees that this institute is a requirement for a law school student. This will be something that will, and I think if I could give you, I wonder if I could give an example of that. So, you know, in Hawaiian language, in the Department of Hawaiian Language, Center for Hawaiian Language, we teach Hawaiian language. We have institutes of translation. Not everyone wants to be a translator, so they don't, they don't work much with that institute. That'd be the best example I could, I could find. And yet, that does have an effect on how we design curriculum and, and how we graduate people. So I think, I think what we're looking at is something that's really working for this statewide interest. We incarcerate a lot of people, and it costs a lot of money. And we think that, that we haven't seen really a consistent effort to actually change the trend of increasing costs of incarcerating people.
So, so your belief is that this program will not only reduce crime, but also in, or also reduce incarceration at the same time?
I believe that it has the potential to do that, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I have a question for Chair Patterson. Thank you. I'm looking at your testimony, and it says, "Allowing for the opportunity of the University of Hawaii will in mess Richardson School of Law to design an inclusive and fair criminal, criminal legal system for restorative and healing aligns with the commission's priority." Is it your contention that the criminal system is not fair and inclusive now?
Yes.
Okay, can, can you explain just a little bit what, what parts of the system you think are not fair and inclusive in our criminal justice system?
I think right now, we're looking at why is the, why is the system overcrowded? Okay, why are there in the, why do MR jails so severely overcrowded and in poor conditions? It's because we have a legal system that is putting individuals into prison, into our jail systems without any concern for the capacity of the jails and what is happening and whether or not they're a real threat to the community. Yeah, we have mental health issues. We have homelessness issues. Public safety has turned to public nuisance. Yeah? So individuals are going, not so much, we create the crime so that we can house them because we want them off the street. So those are just a few little examples of how we're looking at it. Why are we pushing that, you know, pre-trial best practices? In order to reduce our populations in our jail systems. So what the school has to offer is other ways that we can look at our pre-jail populations and how we can divert them from an incarcerated point more into community system of care.
Okay, I'm, I'm not necessarily convinced that the fact that the jails are overcrowded necessarily means that the system is unjust. Is it, do we have overcapacity in the system and they're overcrowded? Or does the system just not have enough capacity for, for the individuals?
The system doesn't have the capacity. But it's also, whenever you look at overpopulation, we have a, we have a problem with the front end. Yeah, with, with our court system. Yeah? If you look at the juvenile system, they cleaned up their front-end system and reduced their incarceration in their jails. Yeah? So they built a 30-bed, state-of-the-art correctional facility in Kapole, whose population today may be seven, because they started reform at the same time that they built the prison. Yeah, because there were, there were kids that were going to jail that didn't need to be in jail. So they created a system of care for the kids so that they didn't have to be incarcerated and maintain the safety of the public.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 554-HD2 relating to campus security. First up is Jennifer Rose, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand our written testimony with comments, and I'll be available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up on Zoom, Every Voice Hawaii, Anna Ezi? I guess not here.
Oh, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kiragawa, and honorable members of the House Committee on Finance. My name is Anna Ezi, and I'm the State Director of Every Voice Hawaii, a student-led organization working to end sexual violence on college campuses. I'm also from Maui and a graduate student at the University of Hawaii at Hilo. I appreciate the opportunity today to testify in support of HB 554-HD2. The resources codified by this bill will make the difference for many student survivors between asking for help or staying silent. And no resources will be wasted to help keep students safe and in school. Five out of six UH student survivors reported not accessing university resources in the 2021 Campus Climate Survey. And more than half these victims said they did not report due to emotional concerns. HB 554 ensures university employees responding to a disclosure of traumatic events like sexual violence have the skills and tools to respond in a trauma-informed manner. The 2021 Campus Climate Survey also showed that two out of three students did not recall attending any training or info session on sexual harassment or gender violence. And 60% were not aware of Title IX services. The survey also showed that my personal cohort, female graduate students, experienced the highest rates of sexual harassment among cohorts, with 50% of sexual harassment coming from faculty. The financial provisions in HB 554-HD2 will allow UH to improve sexual assault prevention and awareness trainings to be more inclusive and culturally relevant for all students and staff. We're deeply grateful to have worked on this bill with UH to address the current gaps in sexual assault prevention and response and get campus gender violence under control. Similar provisions have also been passed in six other states, and I hope to see Hawaii become the seventh. Mahalo for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Kaylee King, Every Voice Hawaii Coalition. Not here. Next up is Stonewall Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii.
Good afternoon. Michael Gallo, Jr., Chair of the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. We stand in strong support of this measure. The old saying goes, a pound of, an ounce of medicine is better than a pound of cure. This is a lot of prevention here with this bill. And so we encourage you to spend the money now so it saves us in the backend and saves people's lives. So with that being said, we hope you, we encourage you to pass this bill. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Hema Watson.
Hello, Michael Gallo, Honorable Chair Kyle Yamashita, Honorable Vice Chair Lisa Kiragawa, and all of the members of the committee. My name is Hema Kelahenui Kayama Watson. I am a senior Ahlakumana PCS. And I have a mother and a sister that both have attended UH Manoa. I am testifying in support of HB 552-HD2 and its unequivocal support towards hurt members of our school system. My mother and sister both attended UH Manoa and both had experiences of sexual misconduct. Both had friends that were harassed, touched, and mistreated. If we want to be real about the situation at our campuses, then we also have to be honest and say that people are not getting the help they need. My mother and sister, their friends, and any student for that matter should never be hurt like that, faculty or not. And if somebody comes forward with their reality, their pain, we have no right to refuse them, to hurt them further. It is the UH system's job to ensure that students are safe, happy, and learning. You can't learn, you can't be safe, and you can't be happy if you're looking over your shoulder. This bill needs to be passed, and for those who oppose it, you're being complicit in the actions of these offenders. Please, I testify in strong support of House Bill 554-HD2 and ask all, and ask all members to do the exact same. Make an actual change in the lives of our people. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Representative Keela.
Is there anyone from UH here to answer this? Hi, Aloha. I have a question. Why, is UH not doing this already?
I think we've.
I think we detailed in our testimony all the work that has been done. I think it's about five pages of testimony. So, I actually was responsible for establishing our system-wide programs that are related to Title IX and Violence Against Women's Act, which includes domestic and sexual violence, but have 30 years of experience doing this work and was previously a faculty specialist working directly with victims. So, we have... We're actually... Have put a lot of our resources and efforts to prioritize both prevention, but equally important, how we respond institutionally to allegations, disclosures, et cetera. I think that, you know, the goal of always coming from a place of being trauma-informed, culturally competent, gender-inclusive, disability-inclusive, is really critical. And so, that's why our testimony has... Provides comments say, "We can do this. We need the funding to do so." Because it is an extensive effort. I mentioned in my previous testimony that I know the state has a trauma-informed statewide task force. And I would love it if we could consider having conversations with the work that's already been done, that we look at this as a statewide effort to become trauma-informed, but that that will take time. And I think the bill requires to work in collaboration with community partners, which I think is really important. That process was started in a previous initiative through Act 222. I think it was Session Law 2015 or 2016. That was... It resulted in some really good recommendations, which I encourage this committee to look at. But it was an extensive amount of work, you know, to work with the police department, to work with community agencies like the YWCA Domestic Violence Action Center, Hawaii Stake Coalition Against DV, Sex Abuse Treatment Center. And so, we do believe that we are putting in the best effort to meet those goals. But this bill would require us to have senior staff to do the training. I personally believe, as a trainer and as a teacher, that a lot of this training should be done in person. We can't, we know, take content that is from the mainland and just use it. That's the whole point, is that there is no cookie-cutter approach to make it culturally competent for our context. It would require subject matter expertise from various people in the community. So, I mean, I hope that that answers your question, Representative. I think that the detail of that is in the testimony, our written testimony itself. And I'm happy to, you know, talk to you in more detail if you have further questions.
How many Title IX coordinators do you have on the campus?
So, we have one designated Title IX coordinator for every campus, for all of our 10 campuses. And a number of the campuses... Well, all the campuses have deputy Title IX coordinators. Manoa has, you know, it's the biggest institution, has multiple deputy Title IX coordinators. And there are often Title IX coordinators who are on the student side and also on the employee side. But they're all trained in the same way.
Because I don't want it to be like that I'm not concerned about sexual assault or sexual violence happening on campuses. But when I look to my personal experiences, I've always seen universities handle it in-house and expand more based off of student support. So, I'm just... I'm trying to grasp with what the legislature is looking... I mean, I know there's a fund appropriation with it. But is UH... Never mind, I won't say that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions? Seeing none, you can stay right there. Seeing none, the next bill is House Bill 580-HD1 relating to victim counselors. First up is Jennifer Rose, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill, and we appreciate the Women's Legislative Caucus in including this in their package. I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Every Voice Hawaii, Anna Ezi.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kiragawa, and honorable members of the House Committee on Finance. My name is Anna Ezi, and I'm the State Director of Every Voice Hawaii. And I'm also a graduate student at the University of Hawaii at Hilo. Mahalo for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of HB 580. Passing HB 580 is crucial to sustaining trust between confidential advocates and the campus communities they serve by ensuring advocates are truly confidential. No victim should be barred from accessing a confidential advocate because they fear losing control over their story by having it shared without their consent. But in 2021, one in five victims at the University of Hawaii shared in the Campus Climate Survey that they did not report their experiences because they feared it would not be kept confidential. As a student at the University of Hawaii, I'm here to emphasize how valuable the Confidential Advocate Program is, and victim counselor privilege is required to match the responsibility of managing the sensitive information that is a survivor's story. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of HB 580, and mahalo for supporting the health and safety of Hawaii students.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any... Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 390-HD1 relating to the University of Hawaii Promise Program. Okay, first up is Deborah Halbert, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Debbie Halbert, Vice President for Academic Strategy for the University of Hawaii system. We stand on our testimony and highlight the two recommended changes that we had to the bill. Thank you. I'm here to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Next up is Christian Fern Upa.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Sarah Beamer for Christian Fern with UHPA. Wanted to stand in our written testimony. However, note our requested amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any question? Representative Ward.
Thank you. University of Hawaii, please. Could you give us some metrics of how many are in this program, how well they're doing, and how these funds, if they are sufficient, will be utilized? And I know it's probably blank still.
So, certainly... So, this particular proposal expands to the four-year campuses, what is already here at the two-year campuses. So, I can give you metrics on what's happening at the two-year campuses right now, if you'd like that. And we also have members of the two-year campuses here to give you more details about that.
Is it bringing in the ALIS families, basically is the core of my argument? Those who are asset-limited, income-challenged earners?
Right. So, the intent of this bill is to use Pell eligibility. So, there's a requirement to fill out the FAFSA. Once you do that, we are a last-dollar kind of award. So, the intent is to go to the most needy of the students at both the four-year and the two-year campuses and provide them with the support to get beyond... To make sure that you are affording the entire affordability of the tuition.
And how are your numbers? In terms of the universe of qualified versus those who are taking advantage of it, what does that look like?
I'm sorry?
How many people have gone through the program? Versus how many are eligible to go through the program?
Gotcha. So, if...
If I can read? Okay. You haven't memorized this.
I haven't memorized it. Now, I can get it.
The point is, if it's working as well as some people say it is, it should be expanded. That's basically the question I'm asking without saying it.
Right. That is our argument, is that it is working at the two-years and that we think that it should be expanded to the four-year campuses.
Because you... And you're following all your graduates in documenting what they're doing, higher education, jobs, et cetera.
Right, right. And so, I don't want to speak for the two-year campuses who have been... Who have a report, which we can also provide for you on the benefits and the successes of the Two-Year Hawaii Promise Program. But it has definitely benefited the students who have been able to take advantage of the funding.
Success begets success, and success gets money from the finance committee.
We can hope.
I think that's probably the corollary. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Representative.
Thank you, Chair. A question. How much money does UH have already for scholarships and/or grants already that they could award to individuals?
So, you mean in terms of not Pell eligibility? So, not from the FAFSA, the federal government, from the university?
Yes.
So, we do awards based on our tuition. And so, a portion of the tuition for each of the campuses is wrapped back into awards. I can get you the exact number. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. But it's part of the process that we build into award packages based on what we gather and collect in tuition.
Okay. Because I know we have this promise program for the community colleges because they don't have the same scholarship and grant programs that the university has. So, this is gonna give the university scholarships and grants and this promise program. So, I'm just trying to figure out how much money you guys have in the program.
Right. So, the idea would be, especially for the four-years, those who are Pell-eligible, they still aren't meeting the full cost of attendance. So, even if we do... Once you have added in the scholarships, grants, et cetera, there's still a gap between what they are given in terms of their financial aid package and what the cost of attendance is. The intent of this is to fill that gap for those students who have been defined as Pell-eligible or have filled out the FAFSA. So, ultimately, we would already have awarded our scholarships, et cetera, on either need or merit. And then, this would fill in the gap after.
Okay, yeah. If I could get the number of how many scholarships and grants you're awarded here, that'd be great. Thank you very much. And you can send it to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Get that information to the committee and the members.
Great, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative Kila.
Are you able to share if... In the appropriation of expanding the program, is the university also committed to seeking more private funding for scholarships to offer?
I think we're constantly seeking more scholarship funding for our students.
Because I think... Want to totally support this program. Like, I think I told somebody I wish it existed when I was contemplating my college decision. And especially when we're looking to Pell-grant eligible folks that need it the most. I just... I hope the UH system will commit just as much as we are going to commit to the program if moving forward.
We have a really active alumni association, and the UH Foundation has been doing an amazing job on that front. And so, hopefully, all of those efforts will continue.
Fingers crossed. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Members, any further questions?
Chair, could I do a follow-up?
Representative Ward.
It says the average award is $4,238.
For the community colleges? Or is that for the four-year?
Well, it says potential promise four-year program.
Yes, uh-huh. How did we get that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it doesn't look like it's too humongous at all. I mean, $4,000 for...
Well...
That's the average award for the whole award? Is that per year?
That would be per year.
Per year.
Yeah. And so, this is... The calculations on that form are by year. So... And so, again, this is a last gap measure. So, the idea is that the Pell grant has come in, but it doesn't cover the full cost of attendance. There have been other awards given. And so, this would be the gap between all of the awards already provided in terms of scholarships and grants and the full cost of attendance. So, it's not... It's the most affordable way to do it.
You're not the core of the financing of this education. You're kind of a catalyst.
That's the intent, right.
It's not very much at all.
Right. That's the intent, is that it's... We want to maximize our use of federal dollars before we ask the state to help support the final cost of attendance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative Ryu. Yeah, so, when you talk about cost of attendance, you're talking about housing and food.
It's more than just tuition.
So, we're talking about funding students for all of these other...
Right, that's...
It's not in addition to just the education cost itself.
Exactly. It's not just tuition that we're covering.
Okay. If we're talking about just tuition, how much are students paying just for tuition?
At which campus? So, it would depend on the campus. So, the community colleges have the most affordable rate. So the community colleges have the most affordable rate, and actually, that's why I think it's a more affordable thing for the teachers. For Manoa, our tuition for undergraduates is around, what is it, fifteen, thirteen thousand or so? And then it's a little bit less at Hilo and UH West Oahu. And so it depends on the campus where, how much the tuition is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 1204-HD1, related to public education. First up is Kitayashi, Department of Education. Where his designate?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Shonarai, Director of Personnel Development, on behalf of the superintendent, Department of Education stands on its written testimony in support of this bill.
Okay, thank you very much. University of Hawaii, Nathan Morata.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Nathan Morata, Dean, College of Education, UH Manoa. We stand in written testimony in support and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mitzihiga, Hawaii State Teachers Association.
Aloha, Chair, and members of the committee. Laverne Moore, on behalf of President Osatui Jr., the HSDA supports this, and we stand on our written testimony, and this would help to recruit and retain our teachers. Thank you.
Okay, thanks you very much. Christian Fern Upa.
Good afternoon, Sarah Beamer with UHPA. We stand on our written testimony.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further testifiers, sing non members? Any questions? Representative Ward.
Laverne Moore, again, please. Laverne, this is a good incentive to get them in, but you know, when you don't have the back door closed, they're leaving like within one or two years, fifty percent. Does this give any condition to bring them in and keep them in, or what?
What we're hoping is that for those that we already have working in the schools, that this would be an incentive to pay for them to get the credentials. And what really hurts our working population is housing. Many of our teachers have to leave because they cannot afford to live in Hawaii, because they cannot even find a place to live. So affordable rentals is really critical.
I understand there's other bills for that specific purpose.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Sing non, we'll move on to the next bill. Excuse me, House Bill 353-HD1, relating to healthcare education. Della Terra Oka, University of Hawaii. Mr. Nubasami.
Mike Nubasami, for the University of Hawaii, we stand in support.
Okay, thank you very much. No others signed up to testify? Anyone else wishing to testify? Sing non members, any question? Sing non, we're gonna move on to the next bill. House Bill 694-HD1, relating to the University of Hawaii. First up is Department of Agriculture.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Morrisata, Deputy Director for the Department of Agriculture. The Department will stand on its testimony in support, but offers some helpful information, noticing that the appropriation amounts were blanked, and so we have some recommended numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Local Food Coalition, Kendo Matsuyoshi.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Kendo Matsuyoshi, on behalf of the Local Food Coalition, will stand on our written testimony in support of this measure and note that agriculture is a growing sector of the agriculture industry. So it's important that we be able to catch disease quickly and, you know, as soon as possible, because we've seen in other industries where we haven't and seen what happened there. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Sing non members, any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next bill. House Bill 848-HD1, relating to Hawaii Institute for Marine Biology. First up is Megan Donahue, University of Hawaii.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Megan Donahue. I'm the Acting Director of Hawaii Institute of Marine Biology. We've submitted official testimony, and we stand on that testimony, but I'm here to answer questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Malia Rivera. Not here? Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Sing non members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Yes, the marine biologist or the biology person, please. Are we still the world leaders in this particular venture, particularly we, and maybe it's related to the agriculture? Do we still supply most of the prawns or the baby prawns for the rest of the world? In other words, give me the state of the art of your industry.
Yes, so Hawaii Institute of Marine Biology is currently, we are a world leader in marine biology research, particularly, right now, we have a number of efforts in coral restoration and looking at kind of responding to coral bleaching statewide. We've also been working on, we have a number of things we're testing right now to help assist with coastal erosion. We're testing different ways that we've, to actually work with nature instead of kind of in opposition to it, to actually use organisms and as a living substrate in order to, to help support and prevent erosion around the state. So those are two areas in which we are, we have active research, but there's lots others, particularly thinking about organism responses to cesspool issues and things like that. We have a fair amount of expertise there as well. I'm not sure about the question that you specifically asked, but we have.
It's always good to hear good news like that, particularly, you might tell the Senate WHAM Committee some of the things that you've testified.
Okay, I will.
Did you want to supplement? Chair, we have a supplemental testimony of good news.
Proceed.
I think Representative Ward's comment actually referred to commercial shrimp production and the provision of boot stock internationally, and we are still the major player.
We're not world leader yet?
I'm not sure if we're the world leader, but I know we are up there.
That's good news. Thank you.
It has to do with production, not with research.
Yeah, and the diseases, we gotta get a handle on that stuff.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill. House Bill 1148-HD1, relating to mental health. First up is Della Terra Oka, University of Hawaii. Mike Nubasami.
University stands in support.
Thank you very much. Next up is Christian Fern Upa.
Sarah Beamer for UHPA, we stand on our written testimony.
Thank you. Members, anyone else wishing to testify, please?
Aloha, Kaiaka, Chair, Vice Chair on the FINN Committee. I'm Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support on behalf of CARES. We specialize in community advocacy, research, and education. So anything we can do to support the mental health initiatives in Hawaii is a good thing, and this is because mental health initiatives help to support programs such as CORE, Crisis Outreach Response Engagement, which is an initiative of the city, and it's modeled after STAR, Support Team Assisted Response from Denver, Colorado. And so in, so these initiatives, because, especially because of the emergency that we have going on, it is imperative to address the roots of why we have homelessness, which is mental health and medical health conditions. And so by providing initiatives at schools, then we can better than provide for those who would need mental health resources. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Sing non members, any questions? Sing non, we'll move on to, I wanna make sure this time, okay, the final measure on the agenda, House Bill 1408-HD2, relating to digital equity, DBED, Bert Lumm.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of this committee. We support this measure, and our Bert Lumm and Ambterternus with our office are also available for answering any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is the broadband Hui, Daniel Smith.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee. I'm Dan Smith, on behalf of the Hawaii Broadband Hui, which strongly supports the bill as noted in our written testimony. I teach basic college-level computer skills at UH West Oahu, but I'm here as an individual, and I had a few supporting facts. Checking with the Digital Equity Office in DBED, there are at least twenty-three highly local organizations ready and qualified now to provide digital literacy training and start addressing the Census Bureau's estimate of forty-one thousand Hawaii households that don't have computers and presumably the skills that go with them. HB 1408 will fund already-prepared training organizations and stimulate more grassroots organizations to start computer literacy training activities at their facilities or use local schools, community colleges in the evening. We want to make sure that more Hawaii households are able to participate in digital telehealth, education, and workforce skills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Literacy, Jo Takasaki Kenfield, Kanzum.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Jo Takasaki Kenfield, with, I'm the Executive Director of Hawaii Literacy. I want to thank you for the opportunity to express my support for HB 1408. We believe that this program is needed to provide funding until the federal funding begins to come and flow. This is needed now to build capacity and not lose the momentum already built through programs like ours that serve communities with, with many barriers, including the one in six adults that have low levels of literacy and other language barriers that we work with. You know, the internet doesn't get you far if you don't have access to a laptop, language-inclusive and culturally accessible training, and, and understanding of how and why the connection can really be used to be a gateway to other possibilities for you. These projects can make the difference between people being able to apply for employment, housing, and other assistance programs, which will impact someone's health and so much more. These resources are increasingly and sometimes exclusively available online, which makes continuing projects like ours vital for our community. Your support of this bill would provide opportunities to quickly expand and support inclusion, digital inclusion efforts in our communities, and provide access and directly benefit communities with the greatest needs. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Kapole Chamber of Commerce, Karen Polk.
Hi, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Karen Polk, Executive Director for the Kapole Chamber of Commerce. We are also a member of the broadband Hui. We do, did submit, stand our testimony in strong support of House Bill 1408, and I'd just like to add that to the other testifiers that I've mentioned, that these programs are actually in process in my community, reaching out to our kupuna and those in need of, of equipment as well as, as literacy. During the pandemic, we especially saw that. We had Wi-Fi bands on the Yani coast helping our Keke get onto the internet. So it's a huge need, and this funding will definitely bridge the gap until we have more federal funding to, for the continuum. So I thank you for this time and the ability to speak on this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up is Kaala Souza.
Aloha, Ka'aku, Chair, Vice Chair, Representatives, my name is Kaala Souza, and I'm speaking for me and a bunch of other people that I've been doing some training with. So I've been doing computer classes in a whole bunch of your guys' districts, and if I haven't, hit me up, because we've been doing free classes for people and giving away free refurbished computers over the last fourteen or fifteen months, done classes for a thousand people. And that's like we, as in me and my wife and my kids. So we've done it all over the state, Kau, Kona, Hilo, Kauai, working with some people from Ni'iha'au, Molokai, Maui, I've been in Hana, I've been in Kalapapa, and so a thousand people. And it sounds like a lot, but really, we have about thirty percent of our workforce that is gonna trip out on the little scroll wheel on your mouse. They're not gonna know what this is for. Almost every time I have a class, somebody tells me, "Kaala, the mouse you gave me is broken." And I go, "I'm sorry, uncle, it's upside down," you know, because they move it this way and the thing goes this way. And so this is, I'm saying thirty percent, that's of our workforce, I'm suggesting thirty percent of, of our legislature might not be able to pass this basic computer skills class. So prove me wrong. I have a test, I have a link, it's online, but thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd love to. But I'm fully in support of this, and I feel like I'm in support of what Ka'ale Ke'oli can commit me of the third, who gave us our state model, but he also said, "Hey, I'll put you in Palapalapau, mine is gonna be a kingdom of literacy, and I just wanna perpetuate that and just add digital on the end of that." So we're in the lead in terms of our work around, around the country, Hawaii's doing legit stuff, and I just wanna make sure that we're the most digitally literate and ready state in the, in the country. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Sing non members, any questions? If you wanna testify, please, go ahead.
Aloha, Kaiaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the FINN Committee. I love free stuff, by the way, where can I get some of that? You know, digital equity, it's what I'm about. I think it's what we all should be about. So Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. So originally introduced in April 2019, and then reintroduced in 2021, the Digital Equity Act proposes to authorize more than one billion in federal grant funding over the next five years to support digital inclusion programs throughout the US states and territories. The Senate bill was cosponsored, and, Senator from Ohio, and then the Digital Equity Act would create two major federal grant programs operated by the US Department of Commerce's National Telecommunications and Information Administration to, to kind of create digital equity access nationwide. And then the proposed funding for each program is 125 million per year for five years, for a total of the 1.25 billion dollars. So it looks like there is, you know, national movement towards just digital equity, and with the state, we should also align with the federal act, and this purpose of this act is to identify and address any obstacles to digital equity in our areas of the state by establishing a digital equity grant program to award grants and create an environment in which all individuals and communities in the state have the information, technology, capacity needed for full participation in society, democracy, and the economy. Many sectors require wireless connection or internet to function. There is a lot of legislation this season about integrating data in the medical sector, HPD, the business sector, which further highlights this point that if we support digital equity initiatives, it can then support our work. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any question? Representative Lomasap.
I have a question for DBED. I just wanted to know, so I saw, I read the bill, and the HD2 says that you guys are requesting five million for this program, and I wanna know if you folks have done any study to see how many recipients will be awarded or an estimated amount of recipients will be awarded through this program.
Bert, if you can come up and answer that specific question. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. I, as you can see, we had some good representation from the broadband Hui, and over the course of, you know, the introduction of the bill, I have been asking them, what are some of the projects that are out there currently underway and potential projects? And I've got a list that amounts to about eighteen million dollars. So it's a wide range of projects that could span local communities as well as statewide programs. So I think there is enough programs out there, and hopefully, the funding will help to get some of those kickstarted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Souza?
Sure.
Mr. Souza, you are not spectrum, you're not Hawaiian Tel, but help me understand that these are grants, and they're gonna go to not Hawaiian Tel or spectrum, but guys like yourself, right?
Yeah, I would say guys like myself a little bit loosely. I'd rather go Key Project, for example, Papu Kulea Homestead, the Molokai Farmers Association with the, the group over there, the Homestead there, some kupuna who are working in anti-Bridget and Molokai as well. So it would, it would be those types of pocket, local individuals or groups or communities that could put programs together. So I've done classes there, they have people, and this kind of project, this kind of funding would allow them to expand, because it's just me.
I'm trying to differentiate between what is accessibility, like if you're far out in the boonies, you don't get anything, versus educational and training and other sorts of things.
Yeah, you know, the early census before 2020, I don't know, Bert will probably speak a little bit more to this, but ninety-one percent of our state, our households have access to the internet, so it doesn't sound like it's a big, huge difference, unless you're in that small percentage that doesn't have it. There's also people who have access but don't know how to access it.
That's the bigger one, then?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's big, and I don't know how exactly to quantify that, but I, I'm there, like slippers on the ground kind of stuff, and so I see them, "Come, you don't have internet." Or they have internet, they don't take advantage of the Affordable Connectivity Program, so that's kind of the challenge.
So what a typical grant would look like, for example?
You know, what I would like to see would be something like Key Project, we did a bunch of kupuna programs there in Kahalua or the Ha'ula, they would be able to buy devices. There was one lady, one program, Rural Health Association program in Molokai, who she said, hey, she told me, "Hey, Kaala, I got ten thousand dollars, I got a grant, and how about I pay you to come do the classes?" I said, "How about you go buy computers with that money, and I'll come do the classes for free?" Because that is easy for me to do a class, I go cut my grass, and you can get, but it's hard to get devices to people, because unless, if you know, like, I'm looking at all you guys' laptops, you guys are living on this thing. But for people, we give them refurbished Chromebooks or refurbished Windows laptops, and they, I had one guy in Hilo who turned to his friend, it was a Lokai Substance Abuse Program, there was like ten guys in it, and, and he, they were about to graduate, but I gave him a refurbished Chromebook, and he turned to his friend next to me, he says, "I've never held a laptop in my life." It was like forty-five years old, and it was just amazing. I just am astounded that there's so many people who don't utilize this kind of stuff.
Chair, forgive me for this last question. Are you gonna be teaching ChatGPT or BotGTP?
I love ChatGPT, I'm all about that. That's gonna work us out of a job.
That's what my point was.
This is the thing right here, and I kind of feel sometimes like I'm teaching people how to, how to start a fire rubbing sticks together, you know, like when you plug in your mouse? Because when we started talking to, I had one, one kupuna told me, "Kaala," he's like, "Can I talk to you?" And I say, "Sure." He goes, "I'm hearing voices." And I go, "What do you mean?" He goes, "From my computer." I'm like, "Oh, it's okay," because he said his computer's talking to him, and, you know, I don't wanna judge him, you know, but I said, "That's okay." But we're ChatGPT, GPT-3, Midjourney, all that kind of stuff is gonna revolutionize stuff. And so the objective is not to teach people like a specific program, it's to teach them the skills that they need, that they can learn now, whatever they wanna learn in the future. So that's more digital resiliency.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, we're gonna take a short, like thirty-second recess to, for decision-making. Okay, we're gonna reconvene the Committee on Finance for decision-making on our second agenda. First up is House Bill 475-HD1. Recommendation is that we pass as is, any discussion? Sing non, Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the Chair is to pass HB 475-HD1 as is Chair and Vice Chair vote, aye, Representative IU. Representative Chun. Representative Cochran. Representative Garrett. Representative Kahaloa. Representative Kila. Representative Kobayashi is excused. Representative Lamasal. Representative Morikawa. Representative Nishimoro. Representative Poi Poi. Representative Takanouchi. Representative Alcos is excused. Representative Ward. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 473 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 473 HD1 as is, noting the excused absences of Representatives Kobayashi and Alcos, who will be noted excused for the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 478 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 478 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 474 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 474 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 968 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 968 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 451 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 451 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1129 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1129 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1130 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1130 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1131 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1131 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1132 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1132 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 824 HD2 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 824 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 67 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 67 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 877 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 877 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 554 HD2 as is, any discussion?
I have a question, I'll comment, Chair.
I'm sorry?
I have a comment.
Please.
I support the intent and the measure of this bill. I appreciate the folks that came forward to testify. I hope in the future that UH can also make it a budget line item so it's a sustainable role and position with the four FTE. So just noting that with my vote.
Okay, this is something that the committee can consider. Any further discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 554 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 580 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 580 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, HB 390 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 390 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1204 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1204 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 353 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 353 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 694 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 694 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 848 HD1. We're going to move it out as a House Draft 2. We're going to be blanking out the appropriation and text. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 848 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1148 HD1 as is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1148 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1408 HD2. We're going to pass this out as an HD3, blanking out the appropriation and text. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1408 HD2 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. We are adjourned.